We will start the meeting. It is Monday, November 6th at 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Stingline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bado.
Sorry.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. O'Day, you've got one to add?
I'd like to add a 12th item under SPW, the Legion Community Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Motion to approve with change.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion with change by Chesak, seconded by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are underway. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown. Prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call, is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. By O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. The consent calendar is adopted. Item six are any presentations this evening?
No.
Nope, none tonight. Item seven is council committee reports. Seven A is personal and finance committee chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 12 items tonight, first of which is discussion on the sanitary and storm sewer rates. The motion out of committee is to take the recommended sanitary sewer rates and storm sewer rates for the first two years and then review it after that time, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So we got that presentation last time, and they had a recommendation to go out five years of rate increases. We thought that was too long to go without looking at it, so we're just going to go for two years and then take a look back at all of the rates.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the first two years, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is approve plans and authorize bid for the police department HVAC replacement, and the motion is to approve the plans and authorize bidding for the police department HVAC replacement project, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Getting a little expensive over there. We budgeted $330,000. Now it's looking to be just over $406,000. So we need to find $84,600. What we're recommending to do, or recommended down in committee, was to use the $64,397 of unencumbered ARPA funds the city still has, and then $20,203 of 2024 capital dollars to fund that shortfall.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Bevins.
Yes, Mr. Chesak.
Chairman Johnson, how was this, before we found out this additional cost, how was this plan to be paid for? Wasn't it ARPA exclusively? I mean...
Connie, no, it was a half and half or something, Connie?
We were using $140,000 from ARPA, and the rest was coming out of capital.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next, Mr. President, the next item is license and permit fees, and the motion is to direct staff to draft an ordinance and resolution for personnel and finance to review at the November 20th city council meeting, making all of the changes they recommended in the memo, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
James put in a lot of time reviewing our fees and the fees in the communities around us, and we were a little low in some areas, so we're just kind of going to bring them up to scale with where what other communities are charging for building fees.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Would it be possible to get the areas where we're higher than these other locations to do a comparison in that to see how much higher we are? Is that something we could ask for?
Mr. Cranbeck, think that's something you could put together?
Yes, I know some of my recommendations, we are higher in a few instances with some of the building permits we're doing, so the recommendations are to lower some of the fees as well. There's a few other instances where potentially recommend removing surety bonds from contractors. So we're maybe have extra processes or higher fees that we're also going to be recommending potentially lowering as well.
Okay, will we get that information for your comparisons, though?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was...
Okay. And we did get a comment from a citizen, Michael DeVal, opposing or suggesting a different rate structure. So you got that email as well.
Yep, I just got that at kind of the last minute here before council.
All right, perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth item is to approve promotion of electric distribution supervisor Mitch LaCelt, and the motion is three parts. One, to include scheduled standby pay as required by the union contract into consideration for initial step placements for promoted employees to exempt supervisory positions. Two, to approve the conditional job offer to Mitch LaCelt for the electric distribution supervisor position at step six, with his promotion beginning at November 7th, 2023. And third, to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the line worker position, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So the problem we ran into here is that he was a line worker, and in his union contract he had standby pay that he was required to do, and that averaged about $6,000 a year. But we didn't take that into account, or we are now taking that into account with his step placement on the grid with the promotion, which puts him at step six.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to accept the retirement of administrative specialist to Elaine Kramer, and the motion is to accept with regret the retirement of administrative specialist to Elaine Kramer effective December 15th, and to authorize Mrs. Kramer's severance pay per city policy and the IBW admin support union contract, and further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the administrative specialist to fire position, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to approve a recreation specialist hiring process as recommended by the park board. As you remember, Katie Kaufman submitted her resignation to the city on October 13th. The city council did formally accept her resignation on October 16th. We sent it to the park board to get a recommendation on what we should, what we should look for in that job or in that position, and they're recommending we go with a recreation specialist instead of a recreation coordinator. I didn't make my motion. The motion is to approve the updated recreation specialist job description and to authorize staff to be in the hiring process for a recreation specialist as recommended by the park board, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So this will be, the recommendation of the park board was to do a recreation specialist. The position will be hired by the city for all of our charter changes of the last couple of years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to approve an interim city administrator agreement with Patrick Wasso, and the motion is to improve an interim city administrator employment agreement with Patrick Wasso effective November 1st, with the general terms as presented, and further to authorize Mayor Bado to sign the agreement, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
The next item is to hire a consultant to help us with our city administrator executive search, and the motion is to accept GMP consultants' city administrator executive search proposal in the amount of $16,500, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
This is eligible to be 50% reimbursed by Sourcewell, so the cost to the city for this search firm will be $8,250.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is the approval of the Brainerd Public Library Board to request $5,463 in funds from Kichigami Regional Library Reserve Funds designated for the public Brainerd library, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
This is that excess funds that the Kichigami Regional Library system had, and that they said some libraries could request money for capital projects and whatnot. It has to be at least $5,000. That did, we've already done a couple of projects at the library with it, but they found some more, three things that they pooled together to get over that $5,000 threshold, and we have to, the governing body, the city of Brainerd, has to approve them asking for their money. So this is what we're doing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of deferment of assessments, and the motion is to approve the applications for deferment of assessments payable in 2024 for applicants at PIDs 41191220, 41300682, and 41250875, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
These are all residents who had been approved for deferments in prior years, so nothing new this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is the debt levy, and the motion is to have the 2024 proposed debt levy be $1,2,476, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussions? Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is part of our ongoing budget talks and trying to find ways to save money to reduce, reduce the massive levy increase. When Connie went and ran the numbers, it turns out debt levy got a little bit more expensive than we originally thought it was. So we're working backwards here, but we'll figure something out.
Well, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last is authorize submission of state of Minnesota Office Attorney General nonprofit charity complaint form, and the motion is to authorize staff to submit the form, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Thank you. Any discussion?
President Bevins.
Yes, Mr. Chesak.
If I could...
You may.
I guess I looked at the Lakes Media's attorney's letter, and it's like there's this, this threat in there of sorts of will we pursue this? We'd be doing something that they can come back at us with because it went, that we're taking on a role that they claim we shouldn't be. And I guess maybe my question's for the city attorney. Are we looking at any, is that okay with you?
Yeah, absolutely, Joe.
Are we looking at a liability issue here if they wanted to challenge this move we're making to ask the state attorney general to look into this matter? And they call it, I don't remember what the word was. I forget what the term was he used. It's not a... Can you help me out here what the term was he used? It's slipping my mind.
Yeah, Mayor Council. So the letter indicates that, that there's no legal basis for the complaint, is what the assertion is, and that the city should not be singling out nonprofits for an investigation where there's no legal wrongdoing. I don't, I guess I don't see this as a threat of a claim against the city. I think it's more of a statement that they think that the request for an investigation is without merit, so...
Okay, that's what I was looking for. I was just curious if you saw, I mean, I don't want to move forward with something that they could perhaps come back and say it's a frivolous type of a request of the attorney general to do this, and then we find ourselves in a liability on the other side of this.
Well, I suspect they would say it is frivolous. But we're not bringing a lawsuit against them. We're not, we're not bringing a claim against Lake's area. It's simply a complaint to the AG's office, and it may be that the AG's office does absolutely nothing with it. So it's, we're just filling out a form.
Thanks, Mr. Chesak. Thanks, Mr. Langill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is seven, council committee report, seven B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have 11 items with the additional, so a total of 12 items on SPW tonight, first of which was the final pay request for the improvement 22-06 Harrison Safe Routes to School. And motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the final pay request for improvement 22-6 Harrison Safe Routes to School in the amount of $4,913.33, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion from O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
This is just the final pay, saying they've finished all their work. We have turf establishment, and I'm hearing we have trees. So that is what we're most concerned about in the end.
Excellent. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a nice tip of the cap to our public works director for five and a half years after we unanimously said plant three trees. We finally got trees out in front of Harrison on Oak Street. It's such a proud day for the city and the neighborhood, and I'm just so happy it all got done.
Appreciate, appreciate the lack of sarcasm. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item was a final pay request for improvement 23-01 2023 chip ceiling project. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the final pay request for 22-01 2023 chip ceiling project in the amount of $135,046.65, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I'll say we budget $150,000 for this each year, and this came in $15,000 under budget, so...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Third item was a final pay request for improvement 23-03 large patching project. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the final pay request for this project in the amount of $49,023, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number four here is a change order number one and a partial payment number one for the Lum Park SPRA. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend the approval of change order one in the amount of $3,077.52, and authorizing a total revised contract amount of $262,973.11. I so move.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So the change order comes from a difference in the thickness of concrete, so just, just a materials change basically from ADA perspective with MinDOT. They wanted a six-inch-thick concrete approach, and then that added the 3,000. The partial payment of 262,000, that comes, actually, now I'm confused on my own numbers. We're paying part of it, but we're holding back on, I believe it's about 12,000 for turf establishment in the spring, and then they will get their final pay request as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number five, we had a parking change on South 8th and South 9th Streets along the Washington, the old Washington School. Motion coming out of committee was to remove the parking restrictions on South 8th and South 9th Streets along the east and west sides of the school, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
There was some parking restrictions on both sides. You can see on the picture here. I believe it was like a two-hour restriction during the daytime.
No parking.
Oh, it was no parking, okay. It's not a school anymore. It's an administrative building. They don't need the restrictions for busing or anything like that anymore, so more on street parking.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
More commentary than anything. You know, I was really surprised to see this come up, because as some of you may know, Washington School was housing of preschool classes for children in the city of Brainerd. I know as a parent of preschool-aged children that this was a huge loss to us, and I was forced even personally to go find other places within the area that could actually have a preschool class for my children without driving to the other side of the universe. So I just want to say that it's disheartening to see that this building is now being turned away from that. I'd hope that as a school district, we find ways of getting preschool classes back into the city of Brainerd. But as of right now, I would just like to thank those in the city that are operating preschool classes and are offering them, because as you may know, we are a city that has an abundance of children who need to attend those classes. So just disheartening to see this happen. I think in terms of parking, great. Love to see that parking is available. However, really disheartening to see that we would be removing preschool from the great city of Brainerd.
Thank you. I'm glad you snuck a little bit about parking in there, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number six was an item we had tabled from last meeting. This is the authorization for the application for Lowell Safe Routes to School grant, and motion coming out of committee was authorize the application for Safe Routes to School Grant for Lowell Elementary under the general scope of option three described in the agenda request, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I think discussion last time was whether or not we wanted to put bumpouts and anything else that was involved in the initial design into the grant application. It turns out there's more flexibility there than what we had kind of anticipated. Number three gives us the option of adding into this application a median along with those bumpouts and all the enhanced signage that was already planned. It's a little more expensive. We might not end up doing the median. It might not be feasible on H Street, but for now, we're going to consider it, and if we have to pull back on it and just end up doing bumpouts or whatever else it ends up being, we can always downscale that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, I just want to say the Harrison project is really nice and has done a great job in reducing traffic speeds next to the school there, and I think H Street could benefit from the median, the flashing beacons, the bump, all of the things that we put on Oak Street. It's really working well over there.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, anything about the preschools?
This is specifically about the actual bumpouts and not about the children that are attending this wonderful school, and we are so glad to have them. My only concern just with the bumpouts is just making sure that we're aligning them with the actual sidewalks. In the initial design, there was some kind of children crossing one street, any on a bumpout that doesn't lead to a sidewalk, then turning and coming across the street. I just want to make sure that there's an even flow. That street is very interesting because halfway down it, you're on the south side, then all of a sudden you cross, which is pretty much right at Lowell, and then now all of a sudden you're on the north side going all the way down. I just want to make sure that we're not just creating additional issues, because you've got to remember we do have winter as well. Somebody's got to be in charge of that, and if we're just putting a small area for that homeowner on the corner to take care of, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of that before we do so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item, number seven, was the approval of a Braun Intertec agreement. This is with our downtown cable load testing. This has to do with our new swags, if you read through. Do you guys know what swags are? Because I did not. They're Christmas decorations. So, Christmas tree swags. I don't know, I don't even know what they look like. But anyway, what this is, is we're testing these cables that we're hanging our decorations from downtown, along with adding, I believe, the 7th Street, north and south of Laurel, adding a couple of cables with some extra decorations that we didn't used to have up before. We just want to make sure those cables are safe, and they're going to support these swags all through the winter and the holiday season, hopefully not too much further after the holiday season. We'll see how that goes. But motion coming out of committee was to approve the Braun Intertec proposal to perform the load testing in the downtown cables for $7,911, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I have one question, Mr. President. Is it possible that we could get summer swags?
Or is that just a Christmas thing?
I turn over to Stunek. He answers all my swag questions. Chief?
I don't think we need summertime swags.
Thank you.
The cables stay out all year, correct?
Correct.
So maybe, there's hope. Faith, hope, and love, the greatest is hope.
Throwing over the cables.
Any further discussion on the swag cable testing? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number eight was a recommendation from TAC. And this is an approval of a termination of the Crow Wing County Fuel Sales Agreement. This is from staff. I may have misspoke there. Either way, a motion coming out of committee was to go ahead and terminate the agreement with the Crow Wing County Fuel Sales Agreement. An iso move.
Second. We have a motion from O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Out of both the lack of savings per gallon in gas, which we thought was going to be about 25 cents per gallon, turns out it's more like 10 cents per gallon, along with the fact that there's only really one station that these guys can go to and fill these buses up for transit. It doesn't make sense to stay in this agreement anymore. It's much more convenient for our buses to be able to use these wax cards, just like everybody else does in the city. And that way, they can shop around for gas and see where it's a little cheaper on their own. But I think this is the right move.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next was a draft transit cooperative agreement with Crow Wing County and Baxter. The recommendation coming out of committee was to go ahead with these recommended changes or agreements as presented, an iso move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I'll say there were some changes in losing a partner in Pine River in the transit system. So it's now down to Brainerd, Baxter, and the county. If you want to get into specifics, I think Mr. Chesak can tell you more. But in the end, Brainerd's probably going to end up paying a little bit more. We're going to keep an eye on it. This is a three-year agreement, but we're going to make sure we look at it every year to make sure these percentages of where Brainerd sits and the cost is going to be accurate.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is a 2024 capital bus purchase. And a motion coming out of committee was authorized to apply for the MINDOT 2024 Capital Bus Vehicle Replacement Grant, an iso move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion on this end? None? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm wondering, was there any discussion on whether this bus is necessary? I mean, since Pine River dropped out, the county cut their routes, I don't think we may, or we may not, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. We may need to be able to reduce the number of buses we have by one. So was that discussed or talked about?
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yeah, we didn't really discuss that as much as what I guess I'd like to. Problem is, we have a lot of buses that are under repair constantly. So to get a new bus, this one wouldn't likely happen until 2026. If something happens between now and 2026 where our cost goes skyrocketing and we decide that we don't even want this new bus, we still can pull back on that in 2026 when this actually happens. So this is just getting our name out there, getting in line for a bus that takes about two years to get because they're built to order.
Thank you. And I do see the Transportation Advisory Committee unanimously recommended this purchase.
They like buses.
They love buses. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. Number 11, we had a Transit Operating Policy Update. Coming out of committee, the motion was to authorize the updates on advance notice and subscription trip standing order transit operating policies, an iso move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the Transit Operating Policy? Chairman O'Day.
This was just a recommendation or it wasn't a requirement, but they both made sense. Just a wording change and two small things that are policies that Jeff can tell you more about if you want.
Thank you. Any further discussions?
Mr. Bevins. Mr. Chesak.
Yes, I'd just like to note that the last four items and this one, meaning five, we have now five recommendations from the Transit Committee coming before this council tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm smiling, Jeff.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you. The additional item we had was the one that Kevin didn't get his paperwork in for in time, so we added it at the beginning of the meeting. This is the Brainerd American Legion Community Thanksgiving. This is an event application, an event that we had in town multiple times. I think we closed the street from what, 8th to 6th on Front Street? And people are able to get as many meals as they want, it sounds like. Jeff got three last year for himself. But motion coming out of committee was to approve the application as Jesse was able to see it.
Second.
As presented by me.
There you go.
It's a great program.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. No matter when the paperwork comes in. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
I just hope that the meals get served quicker than the requests to have this approved.
Not if Kevin is doing it.
Thanks, Jeff. Any further discussion?
I need attorney.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries, please proceed.
And report.
Thank you very much. Item eight, unfinished business. Item 8A is a call for applicants. I will turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Madoff.
Man, if you want more talk about preschool kids and how they should be in the city of Brainerd, we can do that. However...
They now have a place to park.
They do, they have a place to park. However, we will talk about all of the applications that you, right here, watching at home, can fill out. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library Board, one term expiring 2025. TAC, one term expiring 2023. We also have the EDA with one term expiring 2026.
Thank you very much. And as council president, I have one term on the Parking Commission to expire in 2026. Item 8B is looking to accept the committee resignation of Patrick Wosso from the Public Utilities Commission.
Full move, Johnson.
Second. By Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item 8C, under unfinished business, is a review of the contested nuisance agreements. I'm sorry, assessments. James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So City Council held a public hearing and adopted a resolution on the October 16th City Council meeting approving the proposed nuisance abatement assessments for 2022 and 2023. City Council heard from six property owners at this meeting asking their assessments to be waived. Staff has provided background information and pictures for each nuisance abatement assessment for those property owners for council to consider. City Council can remove the assessments by motion. So with that, staff recommends waiving the nuisance assessments for the following properties. $675 for 1623 Emma Street, $350 for 300 Southeast 27th Street, $675 for 422 B Street Northeast. These properties received citations but were cleaned up by the property owners prior to the city having to abate the properties, obtaining a search warrant. It was also the first violation for all of these properties and property owners. Staff does not recommend waiving the assessments for the other two properties that were included as there has been repeated issues dating back a number of years on the properties, having to abate some of the nuisances as well. So with that, I can certainly answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kramvik?
President Bevins.
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Can we approve these all based on your recommendation or do they have to be separate?
I don't know that. We're going to ask.
Well, it's...
Yep, they could be together based on staff's recommendation unless council wanted to change anything.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Any other questions of staff? Then we're looking for a motion on all, actually, the motion, if you wish to follow staff's recommendation, would also include keeping the other assessments.
Yep, I would move that we approve the recommendation for the three to be dismissed and the other two to be upheld.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Chesak, a second by O'Day. Any discussion?
What's five, right?
I believe so. Yes, five. Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is item nine, new business. Item 9A, request, I'm sorry, a request to begin eminent domain process. This is submitted by the Public Utilities Director. Patrick Wosso, our interim newly appointed interim city administrator, but past Public Utilities Commission member. Do you have anything you want to add to what's in the packet?
Before you tonight is the BPU Commission's recommendation for the eminent domain process to begin on the properties identified. There are two specific parcels. We would ask that council authorize that process.
Thank you. Any questions of Patrick on this process? Hearing none? We're looking, oh, Chairman O'Day.
I don't see a map with the two specific parcels. I know there was several involved in this whole thing. Is it with or without homes on all those?
The two parcels being considered are without homes.
Okay.
The commission wasn't interested in homes and that's been a hiccup in the process.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions of Patrick? Hearing none? We're looking for a motion to authorize the beginning of the eminent domain process. We've got a motion for Chesak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to 9B, to designate interim city administrator Wosso as responsible authority as a part of the data request policy. And this is submitted by Connie Hillman. Connie, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Just that Jennifer Bergman was designated as the responsible authority for the city's data practices policy in August. And a responsible party needs to be designated to be in compliance with the act. So with Jennifer's upcoming departure, the policy needs to be updated. The recommended action is to update Exhibit A of the city of Brainerd's data practice policy to name Patrick Wosso interim city administrator as a responsible authority. He just told me how to pronounce it, too.
Thanks, thanks Finance Director Hillman. Any questions of staff on the issue? Hearing none? We're looking for a motion to update Exhibit A of the city of Brainerd's data practices policy and name Patrick Wosso interim city administrator as the responsible authority for our data practices.
Full move.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second? Second by Stengel. Any discussions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is 9C, requesting a workshop to discuss street and public utility infrastructure for upcoming projects. Jennifer Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, Councilmember Chesak also has just asked that we hold a special workshop to discuss all issues associated surrounding future street projects and public utilities project. This would include both the City Council and the Public Utilities Commission. And really, the purpose of this is to discuss and talk about future planning for our street projects and make sure that we're also talking about the public utilities. Councilmember Chesak, did I cover that appropriately?
Yeah, there was a motion passed unanimously by the Public Utilities Commission that we reconsider some of the projects, and that's kind of where this comes from.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff regarding this issue? The recommendation is to schedule a workshop for 6:00 PM on Monday, January 8th, 2024, or Monday, the 22nd, 2024, 6:00 PM. Anybody care to make a stab?
I like the 22nd better.
Okay. We have a motion by Stunek to hold the workshop on Monday, the 22nd of January, at 6:00 PM. That would be here in council chambers. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We'll move on to item 10, public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. And we like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. Just a reminder, it is not a question and answer. It's your time to testify. If you're online and wish to be recognized for the public forum, please hit star three. That will notify us that you're interested in speaking and then star six will unmute you. It's 8:10. I will ask if anybody in the audience or online wishes to speak in the public forum on issues not presently on the agenda. I ask a second time. Oh, please, come up to the microphone, state your name, your home address, and what issue you'd like to speak about that's not on the agenda this evening.
Mike Murphy, 8371 Greenwood Road, Baxter.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. What's on your mind?
The sewer, storm sewer project on Southwest Fourth that runs through my property, block 353, that washed out. And when I called and told them that it was washed out and came down there, and the slow response that was done forgetting it, which costs the city more money and time. And now, once they, which they said they were going to keep me informed and let me know what's going on, which nobody informed me, called me, or anything. And now I went and came up and they says, well, we're all done. Well, I regret to inform you that you are not all done because it's not back to the way that it was before the washout. And I would like to know what the city council is going to do about the damage that was done to my property. And also, I just recently ended up paying for new street cover over there and all the damage that was done to the street from the equipment. So I would like to be informed and find out, let you have you tell me what you're going to do about it to fix it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak before the council on any items not on today's agenda? No? I'll ask a third and final time. It is 8:12, and we will close the public forum and we will go to staff reports. We'll start to my left to our HR Director Schubert. Thank you. Our interim city administrator, Patrick Wosso, welcome aboard. Anything you want to speak, say?
No, sir.
Thank you. Our Attorney Langle?
Nothing here, thank you.
Community Development Director Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. At the next Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing on the proposed short-term rental ordinance.
Thank you. City Engineer and Public Works Director Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick items. First, discussing it with MINDOT, they are anticipating that the Highway 25 detour may be lifted later this week. Some final items are needed, but they're hopeful to have it done in time for the weekend. And then second, staff sent out letters to our residents adjacent to next year's South Brainerd reconstruction project. We're going to be hosting an informational meeting to answer questions about the project tomorrow evening here at City Hall at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman?
Nothing.
Police Chief Davis?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
All right. And online, we've got Eric Sharpentier. Oh, Fire Chief over there. I thought you were the new dispatch reporter. Fire Chief, anything to add?
No, thank you.
All right. Eric Sharpentier from the HRA online?
Nothing this evening.
All right. This is it?
This is it.
This is it.
This is it. I can't do mayor good.
I think all of us respect that. You, the Administrator Bergman.
Thank you. And the only thing I do have to say is that tonight is my last city council meeting. I just wanted to thank the city council for this opportunity to have been your city administrator. I have really enjoyed the last four years. I've got to work with most of you individually and have really enjoyed my position here. This city has so much going on. And I look over the last four years and all the things that have been accomplished, really, it's quite amazing. I know in my resignation letter, I listed a few things, but I could just go on and on and on. So thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity. Also, a big thank you to the staff. I say this to almost anybody who will listen. The city of Brainerd is so fortunate to have the amazing employees that they do. Not only this leadership team that you see at every city council meeting, but also every employee that works for the city of Brainerd. It has been an honor to work with them for these last four years. And also to the residents, certainly hope that the things that we've done in the last four years have made an impact on your lives and have made a difference in your day-to-day lives as well. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm not going to be a stranger. I'm going to work for Minnesota Housing for the state. I will be working primarily remotely, a couple of days in St. Paul, and a lot of travel throughout the state of Minnesota. So although I'm leaving this position, I'm not leaving the community. And Councilmember Stunek, as I did last year for Thanksgiving, I would love to volunteer again to deliver meals. And Jeff, I'm hoping I'm delivering yours. So anyway, just thank you all so very much. Have really appreciated this opportunity.
Extra whipped cream on my pie.
You got to talk to Kevin about that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I just have one thing to note. I was just glad to see that our bus drivers now have the ability to drive around and find the cheapest gas. That's thank you to the council for allowing them to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with council committee, council member reports, item 13. We're going to start down on your end, Mr. Stunek.
I have nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
I have one thing, Mr. President. A lot of people in this community are talking about this marijuana stuff. Weed, they call it.
Mary Jane.
Yeah, Mary Jane. And I've heard some people say that they're concerned there's going to be retail marijuana outlets in their neighborhoods. And some people want that, but some people don't. So I think we should send this to planning and zoning and get ahead of it before we get a dispensary somewhere where we may not want one. And so hopefully, I don't know how to get it on planning and zonings, but...
I think it's, I think Mr. Cranwick's nodded his head.
All right. I told the citizen I'd get it on there because they may or may not want weed really close to their house. I'm not going to tell you which side they're on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. O'Dea?
Just want to say thank you to Jennifer Bergman. I came on, I think, a year, maybe a year and a half after you had taken on your role and was able to learn a lot alongside you. The Charter Commission stuff, the EDA stuff, all the changes have been made there. It's been a ride. So sad to see you go. Thanks for everything that you've done. And I know we're going to work together again with the housing stuff. So look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Stingline?
I, too. I came on at the same time as Mike. And Jennifer, it's been great working with you. I really appreciate that. We are not always the easiest people to work with. Except you, Jeff. That's the rest of us that are the problem. But I salute your poise and really appreciate all the work that you've put in. And I hope you have a place to put your 150th, Sesquicentennial, oh my gosh, I had it. I practiced it so much, I could say it perfectly at the time.
Sasquatch.
The Sasquatch banner somewhere.
Thank you, Tiffany. And Jeff Chesak?
I'm so glad we had this time together. There we go.
I'm wiggling my ear.
Just like Jim Thoreen all over again.
I was waiting for that. Thank you, Jennifer. It's been a pleasure. And I appreciate all your input and advice and also your arguments. Many times have we disagreed. I always felt we came away with a good understanding of each other. So I want to thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. And finally, I will add, first off, thanks to the Legion. Really, that's a super program. Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome back, Pat.
Yay.
We're happy to have you aboard. Thanks for helping us out in our time of need. And Jennifer, I have served with every city administrator we have ever had. You rank up there as good as or better than all of them. They've all done a great job. You become, I don't know what number it is, because we had one guy that quit the day we offered him a job. So I'm glad you didn't do that. Thank you. But you've really been a fantastic asset to the citizens of Brainerd, to the city council. You've led our staff through a lot of toils, troubles, tribulations, and a lot of fun we've had as well. And wish you the best of luck. And I, if we can flood your office with a bunch of requests for crap, I hope we do.
Bring it on.
So on that, we will move on to item 14. We're looking for a motion to adjourn to closed labor negotiation strategy session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 subdivision 1B to prepare for negotiations with the IBEW Local Number 31 and the IUOE Local Number 49 Unions. Thank you, Mr. Stunek for that motion. Second by Chesak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will oppose, same sign. That motion carries. We will take a seven-minute break to prepare.
That's interesting.